Good evening. This is Mr. Steinhardt. This is the Select Board meeting at Southwick Town Hall. Mr. Dede and Mr. Fox are in attendance, and Mr. Moglen is calling in as the remote participation member. And we may also be having the town clerk call in. The chairman is going to-
I think she just dialed in.
Good. The chairman is going to read the required statement on the virtual town meeting that we're having here. And then we'll proceed to the items on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Steinhardt. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, comma, 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of Southwick Select Board is being conducted both at Town Hall and via remote participation by some members. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. But every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceeding as provided for in the order. Despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide for real-time access, and we'll post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as we are able. Before we begin, I've been asked by several people if we could begin our meetings with a pledge of allegiance. So I'm asking everybody to stand and do a pledge of allegiance at this time. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. So can the other parties to this conference call hear us?
Yes.
Okay, that is-
This is Michelle.
Town Clerk, Michelle-
Yep.
Hill. Okay. So we've gone over who's here. We've opened the session. The first thing on the agenda, I'm going to go right to the town clerk since she's on the line. And it's regarding special town elections and regular town election dates, town meeting dates. Michelle, would you like to say something to the Select Board?
Yes, I would. As I think we all may know, the March 31st special state election to replace Senator Humison has been moved to May 19th. With that, May 19th is our already annually scheduled town meeting. I am looking to request a decision to be made on a post-ment to a further date, potentially, my suggestion would be June 2nd for the annual town meeting. And in the interim, also requesting that May 12th election be moved to May 19th as well.
Okay, just for clear- Oh, I'm sorry. Michelle, go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
None others. All I was gonna do is just reference the governor's orders with regards to moving an election. And then of right now, the annual town meeting, I'm still waiting for governor's orders. And with regards to moving that outside of using Chapter 39, Section A, because that does not cover the reason why we have to move May 19th.
Okay.
Or the May 12th to May 19th, right? Is that for the election or-
Well, May 12th-
Is that for the election or the town meeting?
So the May 12th is already covered under the Chapter 45 of the Acts of 2020. So we can move that. And the reason why I suggested moving it to the 19th is we already have it going, and apparently we're experts at having dual elections. So the May 19th would be the most ideal with cost with regards to coworkers and so on and so forth. So that was the ideal moving of that. But we can move it under the governor's orders for that. But it's moving the annual town meeting that I'm still waiting. And it's in this process. I've been speaking with the Legislative Chair for the Town Clerks Association, and it's supposed to come out any time now with regards to a governor's order to moving an annual town meeting. There is what Jim Putnam just used, Chapter 39, Section A, to move it from Monday to Tuesday due to inclement weather. We don't have that option. And then the other option is public safety. And that's not the reason that we're moving May 19th. It's not due to public safety or weather.
All right. So basically, we're unable to make a decision tonight because we don't know or have the legal-
Advice.
Right to do anything at this particular point, other than to move an election. Correct?
This is correct. This is correct. I wanted to lay out my suggestions for future though. I just wanted discussions to be had because unfortunately, we do have to do this.
Okay.
So.
All right. Is there anything else that you need to discuss with the Select Board at this time, Michelle?
The election machine.
Oh, the election machine. Okay.
Anything else? Are those the two items or?
Did you want, did I need to speak on the machine?
Yes, please.
Okay, so with the election, Chapter 45 of the Acts of 2020, it is with the moving of the special town, I'm sorry, the special state election, it is now opened up early voting for that election, which was previously not a situation. And early voting, mail only. Not that I'm opening the office for early voting. It's all mail-related. There's a specific application for it, but it's just mail, not in person. And then they opened up, no matter what date our annual town meeting will be, I'm, excuse me, I'm sorry, our annual election will be, there is now an early voting process for that as well, which that application too is out online. There's obviously another one that's in October, which we all know about. And there's talk about potentially the primary in September. But that wants to be seen. That's the only one that's still up in the air. Regardless, what comes with that with early voting is a separate location to put all the ballots through. And we need another machine to do that.
Okay, and your request is $5,000 from a request to transfer from the reserve fund. Is that-
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay.
Make the motion?
Any discussions before we make a motion? Mr. Moglen?
Uh, do you think that there's any potential to see reimbursement from the state because of this new requirement?
It's a temporary requirement, as they say it at the moment, quote unquote. But I believe it's here to stay. They have not said anything, Doug.
Okay. It does sound a bit like an unfunded mandate, given everything else that's going on. I'll second the motion, but just for discussion.
All right. We actually didn't have a motion made, Doug, so you could-
Well, Doug, don't show me the motion.
I thought I heard Joe-
Show me the motion.
I apologize, because I forgot.
Okay.
I didn't see Doug in the room, so I always forget he's here.
Okay, so Mr.-
Even in spirit.
Mr. Dede has made a motion. Mr. Moglen has seconded it to request a $5,000 transfer from the Finance Committee Reserve Fund. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Mr. Moglen can sign it at some point.
We can stamp his name.
Stamp his name. Two of us have signed it.
Just put it right there.
You got it.
Social distancing.
Can we get a picture of Doug to tape to that phone note? Because I would feel more comfortable knowing-
How about taping a picture of Doug on the-
Even on his chair.
On his chair, the wall. What they call fat boys?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just so we know he's here.
That's what they're called.
Could he be in a suit and tie?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Or a Yankee uniform.
All right.
Or, yeah, a Yankee maybe. Maybe a hat.
Okay. Michelle, thank you very much.
You guys have a good evening. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, we're going- We're going on to the next thing on the agenda. Freeze nonessential general fund spending. I think, I don't think we need to have too much of a discussion on this. I think it's a gimme.
Just in case we need the money to move to other areas that may run deficits because of this pandemic? Or in the event that state aid doesn't materialize as much? So there's a whole host of reasons.
Absolutely.
Now, this is general fund money. It's not money that's from CPC. It's not water revenue. It's not sewer revenue money. It's just general fund taxation money.
Okay, I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
We got a motion made. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay.
And you can, there is a sheet there in the action folder that you can sign.
Okay. So we've heard about, from Michelle, about the special town elections and regular meetings. We'll table that because we don't have enough information. We've approved the transfer requesting money from the reserve account. I spoke to the chairman of the Finance Committee earlier today to make him aware of that.
I sent him an email.
And they will be trying to post a-
Remote.
Remote meeting very shortly. And I also did suggest to the chairman that they might want to consider giving him some leeway, just like this board gave me leeway to make decisions due to the necessity created by the pandemic. And he is going to take that up with his board. Next is provisional hire for Southwick Fire Department firefighter EMTs. And I think we got a-
You got an email. There's a communication from the Deputy Fire Chief, Stefanovic, in there?
Okay, let me just, okay.
He's looking for two.
Yeah.
Okay, he's looking for two, and he's recommended-
Is that it right there?
That's from Michelle Hill. Here, I got it. Okay. He received two letters of interest for provisional hirings at the Southwick Fire Department. One is Stephen Backman, who is a-
He's already the person that you made a full-time career offer to.
Oh, right.
To get the stuff done on time.
Right.
Okay.
Because some of the process for the testing has been shut down.
Yeah. Okay. So, and the other is Josh Gerard, second applicant. He's a member of good standing. Both are available for immediate duty. Shift schedules are currently under review and subject to change due to the declared state of emergency. So he's asking this board to approve those two provisional hires.
Yep. And I think, is there a date? What, is it 120 days and then we review it?
You're, the agreement that you authorized that she had to enter into with the union, which he did, is 120 days.
All right, so you're making that-
So you have already acted on that at the previous-
That's great. I just want it noted.
Making that in the form of a motion?
Since Mr. Moglen, I can't see him, I will make that in form of a motion.
I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay. That's all I have under that. Now we're going to acknowledge payroll number 2019, dated 3/19/2020, an amount of $226,856.99. Ignores payables warrant number 2024B, dated 3/23/2020, an amount of $587,480.38. Need a motion to accept the work, well, it looks like work session?
There's both.
There should be minutes, right?
Yeah, you've got work session minutes in the folder, Russ.
Okay.
This one? There too, yeah.
For Thursday, the 19th, 2020?
Yep.
Does everybody have a chance to review them? Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Mr. Moglen?
Oh, aye, I already, aye.
Okay. It's unanimous?
Aye, aye, Captain.
Unanimous. All right, executive session minutes. Do we have any?
Yes, you do. They're in the folder.
Could you pass them out?
Yep.
Okay. Everybody review them. Okay, everybody happy? I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Pass them back. Okay, let's see. Let's get back to the regular. We've done all the minutes.
Yeah, you might have another set of work session minutes in there, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
You still have to accept the minutes of March 2nd and March 10th regular session. Those have not been given to you yet.
Okay. So the, okay. Then I have this letter concerning the liquor license violations meeting that we held. And the letter went out to Oakenkeck.
Yep, that was the, you authorized the issuance of a continue without a finding letter at your last meeting. So that went out this week.
Okay. We already did the motion on the-
Yeah, you gotta sign it.
Freeze. We'll sign that. Since Mr. Moglen is in here, I will date it.
Well, we can stamp his name because he-
Mr. Dede signed it.
He is voting, you know, he did vote for us.
Okay. Stamp Mr. Moglen's name.
Yeah.
We've talked to Michelle Hill.
Yeah. That we can get. I think Doug wants to go over that as the remote participation.
Okay.
It's the listing of potential boards that we've identified where we think we should be the first ones to have it under a membership. So we'll get that into a minute. We'll get to it in a minute.
Okay, we're gonna hold off on that then.
Just see what else we-
Okay, we did the fire department.
Yeah.
That's the voting machine.
Yep.
That's the voting machine. And that's the voting machine. So everything in the action folder, it looks like it's been addressed.
Okay.
All right. Do you wanna, well, that'll be under new business. So, or did we table this, remote?
Well, we'll just, we'll discuss it under new business when Doug wants to.
All right, the green energy program has been tabled.
Right.
Open space facilities policies, and we have Mr. Clark working on that.
I met with Mr. Clark last week, and we talked about the different things they could do. And him and Chris, as the chairperson of the Conservation Commission, are supposed to be preparing the application so that I can proof it, and then Mr. Fox could sign it. And it would obviously involve what you talked about last week and at the work session on March 10th, which is issues relating to the space, open space facilities, where you'd be looking to have enhancements of the webpage to have some stuff put on it, to identify all of those locations and where they are and what they're about on our town webpage for mapping and so forth. Issues relating to kiosk as well as signage. So all of that stuff is being worked at. So when I reviewed the funding, you had some money left over in this year's admin account that was authorized to the CAO. So there'll be some money there after we're done with the open space plan assembly and printing by PVPC. So there'll be a balance there. So that can be used toward their first priority, which is they'd like to do the webpage enhancement. And then there'll be at least another $10,000 application through a CPC town meeting vote. And then there'll be also additional money in the admin budget for fiscal year 21 from the CPC budget. So those three revenue streams ought to help us be able to move this issue fairly quickly. Their only concern is, you know, the price of signs. So, but that is being researched.
Yeah, there's a couple in town who can get prices from.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the issue there too is, you know, what, you want to be consistent with your signage?
No, absolutely.
And what it's gonna say and so forth. So that's the, that's the follow-through on that from the last meeting.
Okay. Alum treatment contract sign-off.
Right, the, after the town meeting vote was taken, the contract was being circulated, and it's structured for the chairperson to sign it. You, of course, know that you gave a tentative award at a previous meeting for Solitude Lake Management for $720,000. So I would ask that the board authorize the chair to be the signatory on behalf of the board and the town.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. All right. All right, that completes the old business. Then we're moving on to new business. And now we're gonna take up, Doug, you wanna, you've been kind of working on this remote thing for boards to have meetings? You want to give us some education on this?
Yeah, so I had a final call this morning with Michelle and Laura and Jim and Carl. And we're gonna take out a license on a monthly basis for Zoom until, and we can renew it monthly until we no longer need that solution, which hopefully is sooner than later. But, and Michelle was kind enough to send over a list of potential licenses. We need about 10 of them. Because each person who's going to host a meeting needs to have a license. So I'll work on getting that done. I did have one suggestion that I can circle back with Carl. I think the police chief should also have the ability to do this as well. I see she has the fire chief on here. So the police chief also needs to be able to be the starter of a call as well.
Yeah, I'm just not sure, Doug.
And each call could have up to, I'm sorry?
We certainly, you know, when you look at this list here, you certainly see if we can fine-tune it if you want, drop one off or add one on. But the other thing is, I'm not sure if the chief has a separate calling system through his Code Red features.
He very well could, but that's, might be outside the scope of what this is, right?
Well, yeah, because this is for public, this is for the public meetings and access to chiefs. The chiefs' line communications with all, he's got many different options where he can have small subgroups of all of his people. And it's all through his Code Red features. But if, we can talk about it if we think we need to add him to one of them. That's fine, but I wasn't sure. Did you want him to have this for meetings with the public? Is it, because he's not, he's not a board member under an open meeting law.
No, I get it. But it might be a useful tool if he does, because Code Red is pretty unidirectional. It's a broadcast thing where he can just send a message out to everyone.
Yeah.
But if-
I was just gonna say, you have Chief Anderson on, under Local Emergency Planning Committee. And the Police Department has representatives on there. It looks like Sergeant Banish.
Put them both under that.
Put them both under that, so we only need 10 licenses?
I'll take a look at that. The thing is, the, if someone was going to call for a, or have a call, they need to be the licensee. So it's a-
Oh, I see. Okay.
The way the Zoom licensing works. Anyway, I'll circle back to it.
Does that go to a person's name, Doug, or their phone?
So 10 or 11 licenses, it's, what?
Does that go to a person's name, their phone, or their IP address?
It's to their, it's to their Zoom account. It's just the legality of the Zoom license. So you're not supposed to share your login and password, just like anything else, right? So that's how it works.
All right. Okay.
So, but that's here or there. And so we'll get that done. That will enable us to also open up meetings now to the public. So the public will be able, you publish the link on the agenda, and then the public can actually call in or use Zoom to join a meeting to observe or during the public participation part thereof, and also the press.
Well, let me ask you this. If somebody is, has access to that, are they going to be able to speak and interrupt the meeting?
So that's, that's-
A good question.
The key point of the whole thing is, is that the person who's running the meeting has the ability to mute any one or all of the participants.
Okay.
So you could, they could observe it just like we, you know, you could in a regular meeting, and, you know, you could ask for quiet. And if they don't, you'd have a person removed from a meeting. So effectively, the same thing with Zoom, you would just mute them.
Okay. All right. How about, what kind of training are we gonna have for these people?
I sent Carl a couple of emails with some videos and stuff on how to do it. I certainly would be glad to host a quick training on how to do it. You know, to join a meeting, it's bog simple. You know, to host a meeting, there's probably another half hour of training. And, because especially around the recording of meetings, because they need to do that. And, you know, you have to kick off the recording, and then when you're done, you have to save the recording and send it to the town clerk, right?
All right, so.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate you volunteering to do that, because this would make it a lot easier for these nine or 10 individuals that-
Yeah, that's what these boards have to meet.
Right.
So, yeah.
So it's-
They do. That's why-
The training would be-
That's what I'm saying, right.
Some of these boards have to meet at some point.
And, and, you know, you guys can get it on your phone. So if you, if you join a meeting remotely, you know, you can follow the meeting right on your cell phone, your smartphone.
Absolutely. Well, thank you. All right, so we've covered that topic. Is there any addition, gosh, I apologize. I didn't, any old business?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to let you know that, and the board members know that Town Council finished the drafting of the Dangerous Dog Decision for 130 Berkshire Avenue under the DeRosa hearing that you held a number of weeks ago. So that document has, at the request of the, of the police, been emailed and mailed by certified mail to the owners for them to sign below, where the chairman has signed, to accept all of the conditions that they stipulated to at the meeting. If, in the event that were to not happen, then the other version that the chairman signed, which is a unilateral order, would be then put in, into action. So that follows up on other issues that you had on your punch list. All right. Let's see. And that's what I had for old business, so I got something.
Doug, you got any old business?
No, sir.
Mr. Dede?
Not really. I reached out to the electrician for Wally Park for the thing that passed.
Excellent, excellent.
He will get ahold of Carl. He'll send you an email. He's thinking April 6th they'll be able to start.
Perfect.
So, but he's, I just said, please get ahold of Carl and do everything with Carl.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the, on that issue, the, the purchase order was already put in and requested.
Perfect.
So, because he's already a W9 vendor at the time.
Yep, absolutely.
And the only thing I'd like to do is thank Mr. Dede and Mr. Putnam and Carl and all the other staff that did a great job at putting together that special town meeting.
Oh, that's right. That was this week?
Right. That actually probably had more people in attendance than some annual town meetings.
I believe you are correct.
And so it, I think it was democracy in action, and, but it was good. Everybody was safe. We followed all the rules, and-
And as of today, the doings of that meeting were prepared by the clerk's office and sent to our financial advisor, who will share them with bond council so that we can get the approval for that short-term borrowing. Because once you sign the contract, you will be seeing, you know, the work happen in April, and you'll start seeing invoices in May and June. So we will, we'll need to make sure that we will have borrowed the money before the end of the fiscal year. So we'll close our books, you know, having that money in place, short-term wise.
Sure.
And what I mean, short-term, that's usually six months to a year. And then in terms of the long-term duration, you can, the board has the prerogative to set any duration of the note that it chooses. It just can't be any longer than the-
Lifespan.
Lifespan, the lifespan of the asset.
And how long, not that there's a penny coming from anywhere.
Yeah.
But how long do we have, should?
Well, you could go several years with rolling over short-term borrowings and paying them back.
As far as if we were getting any more money from the government at all. Is there a certain deadline before that has to be in, or?
Well, no, the article wording says before you do the long-term borrow-
Perfect. So we got a while.
So you could do a couple of years of short-term borrow-
It could be one of these packages. You never know.
Right.
We haven't seen any print, you know?
Yeah, no, no, this, 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 the wording, the wording of this by Bond Counsel, Manley, and Ben, and myself, was to give the board the maximum flexibility to work with state and federal agencies to try to cost-recover more money.
Right.
So that was the intent of what you wanted. That's the way the wording was constructed, and that's what was voted on.
And when I spoke to Representative Baldiga, he was in contact with the governor's, Lieutenant Governor's office, again, following up for the umpteenth, not sure, to make sure they understood-
Their hands are full right now, but, yeah.
The Congamond Lakes are state lakes.
There they are.
And everybody should have a share-
Yeah.
In maintaining these beautiful lakes. All right, new business. Mr. Steinhardt?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know, I've had discussions with the accounting office just to make sure that they're in the process of trying to finalize all of the budget documents after you held the hearings in February and March for the fiscal year 21 budget. So that's gonna necessitate them just, you know, bringing all the documents in, making sure that all the line item budgets of what was requested is all filled out and fully there. Making sure that the request for capital over and above $25,000 is in place, and all of the personnel requests. So that, you know, those documents can start to be electronically transferred to the members- So that, you know, those documents can start to be electronically transferred to the members of the select board and the finance committee, and they can be reviewing them in advance of when their remote meeting participation uh, component will come on, because like many other boards, you will have members on that board that uh, will not be able to uh, attend a meeting in person, and there may be other members that will be reluctant to do so for quite a while because of the pandemic. So that's gonna be an important high priority, along with the select board and the Board of Health. You know, the Finance Committee comes next, because we need to make sure those um, that structure, that mechanism is in place, so that they can start their process of, of having their meetings and working out their um, particular positions on the budget, and then you will be doing the same for your board. And that's the same thing that we do every year.
And just say it's level funded and no one's getting anything extra?
Well, you always like to, you, you certainly, you certainly want to be able to review the document.
Right.
You know, you, you can start to make some decisions about, you know, delaying any positions and delaying any major capital per, you know, purchase. That you can do. You know, and don't forget, you also have the ability to um, you also have the, the ability, since you're gonna be waiting a few more weeks before you go to town meeting.
Understood, yeah.
So, you, you've, you've got some time, but you don't still have a lot of time. Unless you decide you want to just go into July, because there may be a law that's passed where town meetings can go into July, and then you'd be on like a 1/12 budget. Because school districts have already been given that permission.
Yeah, I've just.
We have not been so far, but it is on the table to happen. So I wanted to let you know that, you know, those are other things that have to go on uh, to make sure that the uh, you know, the town government, like every other town government, um, ensures that it's, it's taking care of um, all its programs and its, its essential operations, its emergency operations, its public safety operations, its uh, DPW operations that relate to ensuring that you're gonna be able to take care of solid waste. You know, which is public health. So you have all of these things that you need to make sure are gonna be able to happen, so that's why I wanted to raise that, for you to really remember that as an underlying theme as you go forward over the next several weeks to a month, in terms of what's gonna be the priority and what isn't. Are we clear?
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Any other new business, Mr. Steinhardt?
No, that's it for now.
Mr. Mogulyn, any new business?
Um, I just wanna, I reached out to Cindy Sullivan with uh, just a thought. I think as this continues to progress, um, we should, I, I, kind of a private-public thing, but just neighbor-help-the-neighbor to, to remind people to, if they can help an elderly neighbor with picking up something at the store, or taking their trash, or whatever needs to be done to help them and keep them from having to go out. Um, and it, and I know Cindy's been doing some of that, and we're gonna try to work with her on a, on a wider scope than just the senior center. Um, because there's people that maybe, you know, shouldn't be going out that are going out because they need necessities and so on and so forth, so I think we'll, I'll work with her. We may put some stuff on the, the town webpage to, to see if we can't be of any assistance. Just kind of a neighbor-help-the-neighbor thing, not looking to spend any town resource to do it, but just to try to be good neighbors.
That's a great idea, Mr. Mogulyn.
It is.
Mr. Didi, do you have any new business?
Um, uh, we go, we got the playscapes closed this week.
Good.
Um, I'm gonna, with your permission, reach out to Chief Bishop tomorrow, maybe, I think you can throw up some A-frames here and there to help block those gates, so more positive approach of stay the hell out. Because of course the phone was ringing all day today, because it was nice out, and
Yeah.
of course, the kids are at some of the playscapes, and I get it, but I'm gonna, if you don't mind, reach out with the chief.
Yeah, absolutely.
And tighten that up a little bit more.
Absolutely. I mean, you know, nobody's there disinfecting this stuff.
No.
And it could spread.
Caution police, you know, maybe it looks better than just a little caution tape.
Right.
You know?
Excellent idea. Uh, the only other thing I had under new business is uh, I, I know we're all aware that uh, uh, DPW Director Brown had sent him some suggestions concerning the transfer station when, in regards to white goods and, and wood. Um, I had a lengthy discussion with the uh, Health Director uh, today over those issues, and uh, got her, her feedback on the Randy's suggestions. And bottom line is, she felt they were good suggestions, but they were suggestions for the short term. So we agreed that we would work on long-term solutions to where people can bring wood and brush, and where people could bring white goods such as refrigerators, stoves, breezers, things like that, mattresses. Uh, so, so she's aware of it. Uh, the uh, Board of Health is meeting tonight. Uh, we're also working on a joint statement from the Board of Health and the Select Board, uh, that will be going out. And uh, I'm, I'm sure that uh, uh, I think we have a great uh, uh, person uh, as a Health Director. I think she's doing a fantastic job, and I know she's new, and this kind of baptism by fire, dealing with this right off the bat, but uh, very impressive talking to her today, and I, I think we're gonna be able to work out things. I made clear uh, my concerns and the board's concerns about that we have to have options for people. We just can't say no. You have to have options for people. So that'll be an ongoing thing, and we'll probably have that uh, uh, under old business, carried under old business, if that's okay with the board.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay, that's all I had. Uh, if, if there's nothing else, I need a motion to adjourn.
And just a point of order, we, we, you have a meeting next Wednesday morning, just as a reminder. In that meeting, you'll have a um, you'll have an executive session, because you've got some deal, issues that you have to deal with under there. But after that meeting, you'll be reconvening into open session.
Okay, so that's next Wednesday morning.
Right.
8:00 AM.
April 1st.
April 1st.
That'd be all it is.
There'll be an executive session in the first part of the meeting, and then there'll be a, a roll call, and then there'll be an open session reconvene.
Okay, thank you for.
So I just want to remind you.
No, thank you. That was a good, good candidate.
Are we still posted for, oh yeah, I still have that. Yeah, are we still posted for Monday, in case we need to meet?
We were never, uh, no, we never posted for that. So we're, we're gonna be meeting on Wednesday.
Okay, so next meeting will be at Wednesday, 8:00 AM. Uh, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I got a motion made. I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you.